I think all three of them. I'm not Italian, so. The joke used to be, uh, maybe off-line. It, uh, it's his signature, he showed up with a man in a costume. Just let me, just let me know when you can do it, it's like where my sunglasses? Yeah, well, I don't, I don't have one of those, yet. He's got a dead guy in the calories. Well, she's alive. Yeah, but you don't even need to cite the rule. It's the best way to do it, just move to suspend the rules, he's gonna grant that.
The hour convening having arrived, all members of the house will please report to the floor and take seats. All members who will report to the floor of the house, the clerk will ring the bell. All members, please report to the floor and take seats, we're about to have the morning roll call. Alright, we're going on to the morning roll call now. All members present will please vote green to signify their presence in the chamber, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines. Well, good morning. Doorkeepers will please close the doors and keep them closed. We'll begin our day today with scripture reading and prayer by the chaplain, after which we will pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. Our chaplain this morning will be introduced by the gentleman from the 68th House District, Representative Jay Collins, Representative Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the house. It's a real privilege and an honor today to introduce the chaplain of the day, Dr. Kevin Williams, who is the senior pastor at the First Baptist Church of Villa Rica in the heart of House District 68. Kevin, uh, was a Central High School graduate, he played on the Central High School State Championship teams in 1986 and 1987. After high school, he enlisted in the United States Army and served for several years there as a military police officer. He, uh, is married to Miss Patrice Williams for over 27 years. She's here with us today, Miss Patrice, if you'll stand. He has four children, Austin, Zack, and two of his daughters are here with him today, Grace and Hope, if you'll stand, please. He's expecting his first grandchild in April of next year and will find out this weekend exactly what that grandchild's gonna be, so we're very happy in our House District to have that. Uh, he received his associate's degree from Fruitland Baptist Bible Institute in North Carolina. He has a master's and a bachelor's from Liberty University in Virginia. He earned his doctorate from the Southern Baptist Theological Seminary in Kentucky, and he's currently been the senior pastor there at Villa Rica First for the past five years. Over the past five years, that church in our community has experienced a lot of growth. He has led the acquisition, if you would, of seventeen hundred new members to that church in that five-year period, with over eight hundred and fifty of those by the way of baptism. So Dr. Williams has been very busy in our district, winning people for the Lord. He's helped plant ten different churches in Guatemala over the past five years, and he's just been a real blessing to get to know and been a blessing to West Georgia and House District 68. Again, it's a privilege and honor to welcome Dr. Kevin Williams to the People's House.
Well, good morning. Never in a million years did I think I would be standing here before you guys. I know my past and, uh, it still amazes me that God allows me to do the things I do. And I want to say a special thank you to Speaker David Rossen, thank you for allowing me to be here, and especially Representative Jay Collins, who's a good friend of mine, come to know him well. Over the past five years, got to be really good friends, thankful for my family being here with us, Patrice and Grace and Hope. And, uh, so, when these few short minutes on your desk in front of you, I sent up yesterday afternoon a gift that Jay told me to get here so it could be put on your desk. Uh, there's something sitting there, it should be, if somebody didn't take yours. It looks like this. It's called a mezuzah. I put some instructions with it, so you would know exactly what that is, 'cause you may not remember after you walk out of here today. But the mezuzah is an interesting piece. Uh, when we were in Israel, I've led several trips now, the fourth's coming up in January, to Israel. And the mezuzah is an interesting, um, artifact there, I didn't know what it was, and I had to be honest with you, I tried to act like I knew what was going on, and our, uh, every time I walked by, the Jewish people were kissing this, and they would hit the doorpost. And I thought, well, that's interesting, I thought they were just glad to be home. And so then I asked my, uh, our tour guide, I said, "Hey, what is this box that's on every doorway that we go past?" And he said, "Oh," he looked at me and said, "Oh, don't you know?" I was like, "Yeah." "No." "What is a mezuzah?" And he said, "It's a mezuzah." And he said, "Don't you know, no, don't you know your Bible?" I was like, "Well, I thought I did, but I don't know about a mezuzah." And he said, "Well, mezuzah is, it says it in the scripture in Deuteronomy to take the word of God and place it upon your doorpost." And he said, "So, that scripture is actually rolled up in a scroll, which you should have with you, it's in Hebrew and in English, and you peel that back and you put it inside a little cutout in there, and then you actually put it on your doorpost at your house." And all my members of our church have one, my wife, while we were there, she said, "Oh, we must buy everybody one of these." I was like, "Oh, that'll be cheap." So, uh, so we got every single member of our church, one of those mezuzahs, they're handmade in Bethlehem, and so they are made out of olive wood, where Jesus was born. So it's a pretty unique piece to have, they're all handcrafted, handmade. And interesting enough, the group that makes them's Palestinian. And they love Jesus too. So, uh, I just had to point that out. So I wanted to share something with you right out of that scripture that they shared with me that day. It is a reminder to who we are, and I thought about today why you guys are here in a special session. It's a reminder to why we are here, what we doing, what you're doing, not us, but what you're doing, and, uh, having a special session for some special circumstances. And so, in the Bible, in Deuteronomy Chapter 11, verse 13 through 21, it says, "And it shall be that if you earnestly obey my commands, which I command you today, to love the Lord your God and serve him with all your heart and with all your soul, then," and I like that part, "then I will give you the rain for your land in its season, the early rain and the latter rain, that you may gain or you may gather in your grain, your new wine and your oil, and I will send grass in your fields for your livestock that you may eat and be fill. Take heed to yourselves lest your heart be deceived, and you turn aside and serve other gods and worship them, lest the Lord's anger be aroused against you, and he shut up the heavens so that there is, will be no rain, and the land yield no produce, and you perish quickly from the good land which the Lord has given you. Therefore you shall lay up these words of mine in your heart and in your soul, and bind them as a sign on your hand, and they shall be on your frontlets between your eyes." And then, where the mezuzah comes from, verse 19 says, "You shall teach them to, to your children, speaking of them when you sit in your house and when you walk by the way, and when you lie down, and when you rise up, and you will write them on your doorposts, on your house and on your gates, that your days and the days of your children may be multiplied in the land of which you, the Lord swore to your fathers to give them, like the days of the heavens above the earth." There's some great promises right here in this passage. In verse 13, he gives us a promise, he says, "If you, if you obey my commands and if you do what I've asked you to do," he says, "then I will bring the rain." "Then I will bring the rain." And so we have to understand that we have to do our part, which is obey, and then he says he'll bring the rain. So if we want to see God's blessings, we gotta earnestly obey His word. Now, I thought this was interesting, I went back and looked. Our forefathers, George Washington, when speaking to the governors in June 8, 1980, or 1783, he spoke, he said these words, "I now make it my earnest prayer that God would have you and the state over which you reside in His holy protection, that He would incline the hearts of the citizens to cultivate a spirit of subordination and obedience to the government, to entertain a brotherly affection and love for one another, for their fellow citizens of the United States at large, in particular for their brethren who have served in the field, and finally, that He would be the most graciously pleased to dispose us all to do justice, to love mercy, and to demean ourselves with that charity, humility, and pacific temper of mind, which were the characteristics of the divine author of our blessed religion, and without an humble imitation of those example in these things, we can never hope to be a happy nation." Thomas Jefferson said, "God, who gave us liberty, can, and can the liberties of the nation be thought secure when he removed their only firm basis, a conviction of the minds of the people and the liberties of God? It is a gift that they are not to be violated but by his wrath. Indeed, I tremble for my country when I reflect that God is just, and his justice cannot sleep forever." Then he said, "The doctrines of Jesus are simple and tend to all the happiness of man. Of all the systems of morality, ancient or modern, which I have come under my observation, none appears to me so pure as that of Jesus. I am a real Christian, that is to say, I obey the disciples of the doctrines of Jesus Christ." Notice, also in this passage, there's something else to the next generation, I think this applies to everyone sitting in this room. We are to pass it on to the next generation. That's what he says. You will pass this on to your children. And so what you guys in this room decide passes on to the next generation. It is of the utmost importance of where you sit, because you get to hold the future of our next generation in your hands. And I think that's highly important, that you sit there where you are. You know, I think about religious freedom. I fought for that, I served in the United States Army during Desert Storm. I believe that everybody has the right to truly, uh, choose freely who they want to worship, where they want to worship, how they want to worship. That's something I fought for. I believe in that. And I believe that I came under that very persecution in Villa Rica, Georgia, when we baptized a coach and some football players on a football field. I know some of you remember that, it was in the national media, it was very unnerving for me at that time, but I just wanted you to know, God is faithful, and He saw us through a tough time, so I remember what it was like to stand and the religious freedom that we serve under a God who loves us. And then there's just one more promise here that I want to point out to you, and we're gonna be done. He says, "And you shall write them on the doorposts of your house and on your gates." And that's the mezuzah. It's a reminder of who we serve and how this country came to be. Only two countries in the world have ever been developed under the word of God. That is Israel and the United States of America. Only two. Only two. The difference here is we're our own Caesar. Jesus was under the Roman rule. The Romans decided what happened. We are on Caesar, we elect our officials. Our district elected Representative Jay Collins, you were elected by your people, we're our own Caesar. And it's important that we understand all these things that we wear. Now, see, you may think this mezuzah's strange. I did it first, but then my God, he told me something. We wear crosses around our necks. Why? We wear WWJD bracelets. Why? We carry our bibles. Why? Because they're reminders of the one that died for us. It's a reminder. And it's supposed to help guide our life. They're just symbols. They're just symbols. But it's supposed to help guide us, and that's what it's there for. And so when I think about that, when I think about the cross, when I think about what happened, Jesus came to do something sacrificially for us. And that's what we're supposed to do, be like Him. Christian means little Christ, little Christ. So if you call yourself a Christian, that means we're supposed to be like Him. And what did He do? He gave sight to the blind. He made the lame walk. He healed the sick. He raised the dead. And He gave hope to the hopeless. And right now, I know that you're in session, 'cause you're all trying to give hope to a bunch of desperate and hopeless people right now. And I thank God for that, why you're here. And I thank God for each of you that you're serving, and remember why you're serving. You're serving under a Lord and Savior Jesus Christ in the United States of America, in a state called Georgia, to help its citizens. That's why we're here. And I want to pray for you now. Lord Jesus, I come to you now, and Lord, I know that, uh, God, these men, these women that are in this room, God, they, they want to serve, they want to be the best for their districts. They want to serve their people that they represent. But God, I pray that their thoughts originate from the Word, and that, Lord, they're serving under, under you to make great decisions for this great state. And Lord, I do pray for each one, that you would bless them, protect them, watch over them, and God, that you would surround their homes with your angels and a hedge of protection. Keep them safe, Lord, and let them keep their eyes on you in all that they do. And Lord, Indian, we're gonna give you all the praise and honor and glory for what happens. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen. You would, do you want me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll make sure you get them.
They leave me out up here sometimes.
Doorkeepers will unlock the doors. Doorkeepers will unlock the doors. Chair recognizes Chairman Darlene Taylor, the chair of the Committee on Information and Audits.
Mr. Speaker, your committee on information and audits has read the proceedings of the previous legislative day and found them to be correct.
Chairman Taylor, the chair of the Committee on Information and Audits, reports that the Journal of the Previous Legislative Day has been read and found to be correct. Is there any objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The chair hears none, and the Journal is confirmed. The clerk will read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day.
Mr. Burns, on the 59th, moving along me establishes the order of business, during the first part of the period unanimous consensus. Third reading and passage of uncontested local bills and resolutions. Morning orders.
There are no bills. Second reading, no second readers, no reports of standing committees. We're going on now to the rules calendar.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the House unanimously consent to suspending the rules, that this body might take up the committee substitute to House Bill 1 EX.
Clerk will read the caption.
House Bill 1 EX to amend an act making and providing appropriations for the state fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, known as the General
Chairman England has moved that the House give unanimous consent to waiving the rules, suspending the rules temporarily to allow the Appropriations Act to be taken up, considered, and voted on, even though it did not hit the desk until 3:30 PM yesterday. This would be a waiver of the 24-hour requirement. Is there objection? Chair hears none, and it is so ordered. Now, the clerk will read the caption again to House Bill 1 EX.
To amend an act making and providing appropriations for the state fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, known as the General Appropriations
We are about to take up what the Chair believes to be the most important reason that we are here for this special session. If you don't agree with the Chair, and you have things more important than considering an appropriation of state funds to help a devastated part of the state, then we have two anterooms in a hallway, and if you're really a party sold, you can go outside and stand in the cold and the rain and take your conversations. Chair is going to ask that you remain in your seats and give attention to the proceedings. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, the Chair resolves the House into a committee of the whole House for the purpose of considering House Bill 1 EX, the general appropriations bill. The Chair appoints the gentleman from the 159th District, the Majority Leader of the House, Leader Burns, as Chairman to preside over the committee of the whole House.
Thank you for your attention this morning and for your attention this week as we're about this most important work, as the Speaker just said. At this time, the Chair recognizes the gentleman from the 116th, Representative England, to Representative England.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as a family of Georgians, when one Georgian hurts, we all hurt. I'm one of the fortunate few in our state now that gets to be a part of two families, part of our ag family. And when my brothers and sisters in our agricultural family across this state hurts, it hurts me as well. I think everyone here is like me. We all enjoy at least three meals a day. Some of us like four or five. I'll eat as much as I can most days. My wife will attest to that, and others. But without the backbone of our state, the state's largest industry, agriculture in general, over $73 billion to $74 billion economic impact to this state, we would not be where we are today. We would certainly not be as fortunate as we are today to be able to enjoy the cheapest, safest, and most adequate food supply in the world. Not to be able to say, stand up here and say that Clay Perkel and others that grow peanuts across this state supply nearly half the world's use of peanuts, well over the half the nation's production of peanuts, to feed populations around this world that without that simple nut, the nutrition from that simple nut, would otherwise starve to death. So we come today, of course, with humble hearts, but as a blessed nation, as a blessed state, and we're blessed because we have this opportunity to come here as a body called by our Governor in the special session to address the needs and issues of our hurting family and of my hurting ag family. If you look at the Internet for our, we all have our little bios on there, you'll see that I list myself as a farmer and agribusinessman. I don't get to turn as much dirt as I would like to. I don't get to burn as much diesel fuel, get sprayed with hydraulic fluid as much as I would like to. But there's something calming about being in that tractor seat, working that bunch of cows, checking moisture on hay, that just brings a peace to me and everybody that I know, that the Lord is blessed to provide the food, fiber, and shelter for our nation and for our world. So ladies and gentlemen, I want to, again, thank our Governor for calling us in the special session, thank our Speaker and our leadership and you as members for being willing to come here and do something we have never done, and that is a response to a storm like no other we've ever seen. And so I want to walk you through very quickly some changes that were made to the document that were, that was presented on your desk on Tuesday when we arrived. But I want to kind of go through and tell each point, what each one of those additions that were coming in through this amended budget process will do, hopefully do, to help our ailing family across this state. So as you know, the Governor has increased the revenue estimate by $270-some-odd million. And in doing so, that recognizes revenues that were coming in above projections, much like we do in a regular amended budget when we're here in session in January, February, and March. Of that $270 million, $69,332,055 goes into the Governor's Emergency Fund. We have a match that we have to meet on behalf of the state and local governments on FEMA's assistance, on cleanup, on so many items that are out there. The Governor has agreed this month, this week, to the disaster tannif proclamation that requires an additional match as well. So many of these funds will be going into that. And let me, let me back up and say this to also. Y'all, this may well just be a start to what we need to do to help our folks across this state. This is not necessarily meant to be the be-all, end-all, do-all, but this is at least a start in some areas that we know that are immediate needs, that we can make an impact in, that the impact is needed before an amended budget is signed in late February or early March. So we need to go ahead and move forward with this. So $69 million to the Governor's Emergency Fund. As you all know, we own numerous state facilities across this, this beautiful state of ours, and we do self-insure ourselves. Well, when we have a catastrophic loss, like we have seen in many areas across this state, it, it not only affects individuals and businesses and corporations, but it affects us as a state. It affects us on property that we own as a state. And so therefore, we're looking to appropriate $8.98 million into our self-insured fund to cover the increase in premiums, because basically what we do, it's kind of like state health benefit plan. What we spent last year is what was, or what was insured and spent last year becomes what we pay for a premium in the coming year. Georgia Development Authority, under the Georgia Department of Agriculture, Commissioner Black and his team at the Georgia Department of Agriculture. Not only have DNR and Public Safety and GMA and folks, friends with FEMA and forestry and DOT and linemen been on the ground, running to and from, doing different things, the Department of Ag has been very busy as well. And I want to thank Commissioner Black, just as I did yesterday, and the other Commissioners and Directors of these agencies for the response that we've had across this state. But Commissioner Black has about 600 employees, 200 of those, one-third of his employment has been in southwest Georgia doing inspections, so grocery stores can open back up, making sure that the food that they're selling is safe, working with gasoline companies and convenience stores, making sure the gasoline, diesel fuel that they're selling does not, has not been tainted with water. So their folks have been on the ground, running wide open as well. But under the Department of Agriculture is the Georgia Development Authority. It's an entity that we've talked very seldom about. It's a very small entity, but within that entity, there is the ability to do some outreach. The importance that we're running into, or the importance that this brings, this session brings today, is many of our farmers had taken production loans early in the year. They were planning on picking a crop, whether it be cotton, digging peanuts, picking fresh fruits and vegetables, pecans, some even cutting timber, that they had put a whole year's worth of work into to see Hurricane Michael come through and destroy overnight. Well, those, we talked about unintended consequences many times, but this, this was not an unintended consequence. This was a consequence of the storm, that the next morning, there were a pile of bankers around this state that woke up and realized they had a bunch of notes that just went south overnight, by no fault of anyone, by no fault of anyone. So through the Georgia Development Authority, you'll see a $50, $55 million emergency relief fund there. That will go in to help undergird and guarantee many of the loans, many of those production loans that are out there, because there's not a crop to sell. And then the Development Authority and the local banks that they're going to be working with will then go forward and amortize those loans over a period of time to allow that farmer to get back on their feet and actually pay that money back, whether it's a disaster payment from the federal government, whether it's an insurance payment from an insurance company or crop insurance, that money then will go back in to pay that loan off. But we've got to be able to do something in order to enable those banks and those farmers to suffer through this without losing everything they have, and without the regulators coming in and seizing more banks. We are certainly under the impression and the hopes that the federal government is going to match this fund to some degree. We're not sure what that will be. We're not even sure exactly when that will be, but the $55 million gives it the kickstart to get things going there. $20 million in emergency disaster relief for the State Forestry Commission to use through the Development Authority to go in and clean up many of the devastated timber stands around this state. As Chairman Nimmer and others know, and myself know, because I've had pine trees, and I've had pine beetles infest those pine trees, that once a pine tree gets injured or damaged, it's, it's like hanging out a free all-you-can-eat buffet to a southern pine boar, or a southern pine beetle, or bark beetle, or any of those other insects. And we've got that issue on the ground right now with trees that are damaged, that are just sitting there with that open buffet sign hanging out. And unless we can get that debris cleaned up, we not only damage or lose the crop that's there, but we also endanger many other crops into the future of pine trees and hardwood trees as well. And not only that, but two, three, four years down the road, God forbid, we have another fire outbreak like we saw in the swamp in 2011. We're sending our men and women with the Georgia Forestry Commission into those areas to fight fires, to plow fire breaks, to, to push out ways that trucks can get in to fight those fires. The last thing we need to have happen is there be a tangle of trees that no one knew was there, and that one of our forest land firefighters on a machine gets to that tangle of trees and has no way to escape the fire that may be chasing them. There are so many reasons that this is important. Speaking of the Forestry Commission, you'll see an add of a little over $7.4 million for equipment. Uh, they, they have a 20-year replacement schedule, and we've been trying to help them along with that over the last several years. Uh, have many machines that are aging out, many, uh, road tractors that are aging out, lowboys that are aging out. This is to go replace much of that equipment that's 21 to 28 years old, whether it's a lowboy, whether it's a tractor-trailer truck, or whether it's a, a dozer, or some other piece of machinery used in the firefighting. Unfortunately, during the, the storm, the Forestry Commission also lost two offices, total devastation on two offices. So you'll see $770,000, and it'll actually go to replace two for equipment. They, they have a 20-year replacement schedule, and we've been trying to help them along with that over the last several years, have many machines that are aging out, many road tractors that are aging out, lowboys that are aging out. This is to go replace much of that equipment that's 21 to 28 years old, whether it's a lowboy, whether it's a tractor-trailer truck, or whether it's a, a dozer, or some other piece of machinery used in the firefighting. Unfortunately, during the, the storm, the Forestry Commission also lost two offices, total devastation on two offices. So you'll see 770,000 dollars, and it'll actually go to replace two offices that were destroyed, and that is being combined into one district office in the Blakely, Georgia area. Under DCA, you'll see 25 million for One Georgia and 15 million for REBA. As we all know, we have had a very successful run in economic development as a state compares to others, 750,000 jobs added in the last eight years alone. Much of that success and much of that credit, of course, goes to our governor and our leadership, but it also goes to the programs through One Georgia, the Edge and Equity Grants there and the REBA program that helps with infrastructure. We, we know that one of the things we need to be prepared for is if we, and there are several mini companies looking at us right now that are just about to sign, we need to make sure that we have in the bank what we need to do to come up with our part or our end of that deal. And thankfully, many of these projects that are on the line right now are in rural southwest Georgia, so that relief will be there for them. Last but not least, under transportation funding, a little over 69 million, part of that is recognition of general motor fuel funds coming in above projections. But of that, a large portion, of course, DOT has had quite the response that they have had to do with men and equipment to clear roads and highways and bridges and some bridge repair and some road repair from the storm. But right now, they have spent in excess of 31 million dollars in hurricane relief and recovery efforts, and then there'll be a large portion of federal dollars that they will have to match as well. So ladies and gentlemen, that, that's probably the simplest amended budget, or is the simplest amended budget that I've explained to you in eight years that I've had the chance to chair this committee. And in a lot of ways, it's the most important amended budget that I've ever presented to you. While these are dollars, it's 270 million dollars, and it's in four or five different programmatic areas. There's a lot of individuals, thousands of individuals that will be touched by what we do here. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to present, and I'm more than happy to answer some questions if there are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have any questions now on the subject that is before us? I will recognize Representative Stovall from District 7 on your left, Mr. Chairman.
Does a gentleman yield?
Yes, ma'am.
In the proposal, is there money in there to be able to help the school districts that were affected? I know I heard about one or two that buildings were destroyed or anything like that had happened during the storm.
Good question. And as we have always done, when we've had school buildings destroyed, the state does come in to make those school systems whole. Part of that response, of course, will be from DOAS, but the other response is that typically, once we know what the damage is and, and have a, have a dollar amount, we will do that in the bond package then as we come to the amended budget for those destroyed
Thank you. At this time, the chair would recognize Representative Williams, our friend from District 168.
Oh, my.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does a gentleman yield?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know that there were quite a bit of poultry loss, but I can't remember seeing losses with cattle. Do you have any numbers on cattle?
I do not have accurate numbers on cattle. I have asked that question, and what I have been told is that the actual cattle losses were not very high. The, most of the cows, I mean, cows and animals as a, as a whole have a, an unusual instinct when storms come about. They know how to take care of themselves pretty well. In talking with Will Bentley with the Cattlemen's Association back right after the storm had happened, at that point, the losses were very minimal in cattle. There were more issues with down fences and cattle getting scattered, but I know that, that all of our family down there have come together to help sort everybody's cows back out to who, what belongs to who. But to this point, my understanding is those losses were minimal compared to many of our other ag losses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Representative. Chair now recognizes Representative Howard from District 124. On your left, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to commend the governor and the appropriations leadership as well for what we are doing here today. And I had a call, we, Mr. Chairman, you and I were trying to have a conversation just a minute ago, and I, but I got a call last night from a group of pastors down in Macon, Georgia that's, has set up a relief, disaster relief fund. And the question was, was any of this, these funding, these funds going to be used to help those that are the least of, the least of those, least of?
The least of those among us.
Yeah, among us. As we disperse these funds, will they, will there be any consideration or any funds directed for that? I know we're doing some matching dollars and GMA's involved and all of that, but you know, from the state, will there be any, for debris removal on, and I think this sort of tied into Representative Williams' question, or someone asked that question yesterday in the meeting, on private property, you know, when you get into some of these poor-stricken areas, will we be able to help those that are, be, not going out passing out money or anything like that? But that was where my question was leading to.
So there are several approaches that happen in that, in that arena. Of course, your local government, cities and counties have, have stepped up to the plate and did a good bit of that work, or have done a good bit of that work and are continuing to do a good bit of that work. The money in the governor's emergency fund that goes for the match, as I mentioned, we, the governor signed the agreement this week to activate something we have never done as a state, and that's to take advantage of the disaster tannif program. That also will affect the least among us. And quite frankly, there, we're not going to be able to touch everything or do everything for, for everyone, and this is not an attempt to, but what I would say is we're making a good faith effort to do as much as we can. We also have to keep in mind that there are other ways that, that a lot of these things happen, through private insurance, whether it's insurance on the homestead that the individuals are living in. And then quite frankly, that quite often there are some disaster, federal disaster programs that go in to help with that as well. So it, there are a lot of different avenues that that need gets addressed. And the, and in this document, it would primarily be through the governor's emergency
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chair now recognizes Chairman Willard from the 51st, first for a question to your right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was reading the parts about the problems apparently Army Corps of Engineers having in getting their funding. Is that something that we see will be resolved? And when it is resolved, are there going to be additional funds that will come back to use in the state from them?
The, the situation with FEMA has been kind of interesting to watch, and the Army Corps is where that, the disagreements have come in is through the Army Corps and its response with FEMA. That issue is being resolved. Of course, DOT remobilized, I think, 49 or 50 units and sent back to southwest Georgia after we thought FEMA's response was coming. That's part of the additionally incurred cost under DOT. The match, the governor's emergency fund, the, the 69 million there goes to pay our portion of the FEMA response. The general that runs Army Corps has signed two orders, well, let me back up, he has signed five executive orders to quash the disputes that were going on in his career. Two of those orders were signed last week in relations to the southwest Georgia issue. I, I have seen that FEMA has started working, there are some different agreements with some of the cities and counties where there are side agreements to the Army Corps agreement. So they're, they're working there. My understanding is that if FEMA response through the Army Corps is not happening right this minute, that it will happen anytime now.
And those funds will be coming back to the state?
Well, we have a match. We, depending on the category, it's a 10 to 25% match of whatever the cost is. So if FEMA spends $100, then we're required to match between 10 and 25%, depending on what category that, that match falls into, or that aid falls into.
And a follow-up question, how much of these funds we're allocating are earmarked as being the portion of state funds for matching funds, you know?
I'm sorry.
How much is earmarked as our portion of what we're having as our, our part of the matching funds?
Of the 69 million in the governor's fund?
Whole thing, I think 270?
No, are you asking?
Yes, sir.
And the 69 million potentially is a, is a match.
That's the match part, okay.
And in the 55 in the Georgia Development Authority, we feel very comfortable that there will be some type of match there as well that will multiply that fund as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chair recognizes Representative Bennett from the 94th to your left. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It certainly is a wonderful opportunity and commendable as to the expansive reach that the committee is doing in covering and providing for some assistance. I do have one question, though, at the removal of the health program at Mercer in Columbus, will there be an opportunity to come back and put that back into the budget at some time in the near future?
That will be something we will certainly take up as we come back in January. That as well as the Chattahoochee Technical College piece that was removed yesterday as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the question. The chair recognizes Representative Cannon from District 58.
Does a gentleman yield?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your quick efforts. I wanted to ask, how does this coordinate with the recent passage of House Resolution 51, which most Georgians know as Amendment 3 on the November ballot to lower the burden on timber owners?
This really doesn't have a direct relationship, however, potentially it does, and I'll, I'll explain that. That, you, you sounded like a simple question, but it's a pretty complicated answer. Timber is unique. As everyone knows, it takes a while for the good Lord to grow a pine tree or a hardwood tree. And a crop is planted this year that, and I'm going to defer to my Chairman Nemmer, that the first thinning maybe comes at year 15. Another thinning possibly at year 20 to 25. And then you typically, if you're going to harvest timber, timber, you're going to do it at about the 30-year mark. What winds up happening, if we do not encourage the efforts of individuals to go in cleanup and then replant, there are many cascading events that happen. Amendment 3 doesn't really matter at that point because there's no accessible value to that piece of property. As a matter of fact, in some of the information I've been reading to try to study up on this, you go from a rough value of about $900 per acre as to what that piece of property is worth and what it's assessed for. After a disaster like this, if nothing is done, that property value actually drops to a negative $617 on average per acre. Because when you think about it, it's about $400, give or take, to do the replanning per acre. That doesn't include the clearing and cleanup per acre. So basically, you have a piece of property that's now a liability instead of an asset. So what does that do then, rolling forward and kind of getting to your question? It destroys the tax base for a school system, it destroys the tax base for a county government as well. And then what, what Amendment 3 was meant to do was kind of put everybody on an equal playing field. So it, there's no real relation between it and what has happened, but yet there are impacts that if this property is not put back into forest or not reforested, that those impacts go on multi-generational because you have companies that have built timber mills with expectation of what the, the amount of product that would come 20 years out based on the number of acres planted and maturity and growth rates and all of that. So it's not only that investment, but it's the investment in jobs, it's the investment in, you know, 401Ks and, and, and kids' college funds and those things that went out the window as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand all that a lot better now. That was very thorough. Chair now recognizes Representative Frazier down in Burke County to your right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does a gentleman yield?
Yes, ma'am.
I do appreciate what we're doing now as it relates to the disaster area, but Mr. Chairman, as you know, we also have other areas that got the remnant effect from Hurricane Michael. And I spoke with my extension agencies in Burke County, and I've had this conversation with you. I'm very concerned, as they are, about their loans. And we talked about the, you, you spoke about the amortization process. So is this already in place with the bankers so they can make those extensions? Because I have many farmers that do not want to default on their loans, but they currently also lost production as it relates to our cotton, our sorbien, and all of that also in I, in my Burke County area. So have we also included those in the conversations because they are concerned about also defaulting on their loans?
So the, the 55 million I mentioned through the Georgia Development Authority would go to, to address what you're talking about in the counties that were declared part of the disaster area. And we have been working, and I know Commissioner Black, who chairs the board at the Georgia Development Authority, has been working with, with the board and the leadership there at the Development Authority to develop how this program is going to work. I know they, they came together with a pretty solid document, is my understanding, last Friday, if I'm not mistaken, as to how to work with the banks to actually make these loans happen, to make that guarantee happen. I have not seen the document yet, but I know that it, it exists and that they're working around the clock to try to put all those pieces together. Because this, this is, as I said to begin with, this is something we have never dealt with in this state, to, to the, to the expanse that we have seen this storm and the damage that it has wrought on our state. We've never seen anything like it, and we've never had a response or even thought we need to have our spots ready for it. So everybody's scrambling and working very hard because we all realize the immediacy of the need when it comes to those production loans and then going forward into getting ready for next spring to hopefully go in and replant and, and being able to borrow the money to do that. So I know that they're, they're doing all they can to get ready for it.
Chair recognizes Representative Dukes from One District, from District 154.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. With a gentleman yield?
Yes, sir.
I have two questions, one being you said that the matching for the municipalities for its cleanup in the counties, that it was a range of between 10% reimbursable by the state up to 25. How did we come up with that?
That is, that's a federal requirement. So we, we always, as a state during disaster response, we pick up the local share of the disaster, required disaster match. So FEMA sets that percentage based on what category of cleanup it is. They're the ones that set that. We pick up all the local share as a state.
Is it not true then that you're saying that the state is going to pick up the remaining local share?
We pick up the local, the state and local share, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That will be a tremendous help, Mr. Chairman, that.
Second question.
Yes.
You, you have mentioned that for the farmers that have loans with the banks, that they are going to be re, we're going to work through the account, try and help those people to be made whole, or at least to make sure that they don't go out of business. There are also a group of farmers that we have in South Georgia that are kind of recreational farmers, they don't borrow money. Some farmers have had problems getting money from loans from banks in the past, so what they have done is they pretty much farm out of their pocket. Is there any provisions that are going to be made for this group of farmers?
Those group of individuals, as well as the others, will be provided for in the federal assistance. So if you, if you have a documented loss, then you will qualify for the federal assistance. And it, that, that's traditionally been the way that this nation has responded to these type disasters, and that's what, what we're looking to see happen in this case. We have responded as a state, as individuals, through tax dollars, to help states in the Midwest during disasters, states on the East Coast, states far out West, and it's a national security issue that we have a safe, adequate food supply to feed our country. And so we have a gratuities clause within our constitution as well that prohibits us from being able to make right checks to you for something that we don't get the benefit of as a state. of as a state. The federal government does not have those hamstrings, and they do do these disaster responses. So for those individuals that haven't borrowed money, and even these that have borrowed money, the true remedy comes through the response of the federal government. We're trying to build that little bridge to get across either that small creek or that big river to get them to the point when those responses come.
So i- is it not true, then, you're saying that if you did not borrow money, there is relief for you from the feds, but the state did not take that in consideration in our measure?
We were trying to do two things. Undergird banks that bank presidents woke up the next morning realizing that they had notes on the books that had no value. Two, help the farmers that had the, that owned those notes, owed those notes, get through the point that the federal disaster response comes. So everybody winds up in the same position in the end, but we have a group of individuals that because they borrowed money, they have nowhere to turn at this point. The individual that spent cash out, they're out cash, but it's not borrowed. There's not someone looking and knocking on the door to come repossess a farm or repossess a bunch of equipment. So those individuals that did it out of their pocket, while I hurt for them just as much as I hurt for the others, the ones that are about to lose everything are those that borrowed money. And those are the ones that we're trying to get through that, that thicket.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chair recognizes a gentleman from District One-Fifty-three, Representative Elam from the affected area.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, does the, Mr. Chairman yield?
Yes, sir.
I deeply appreciate Governor Deal and this House. Often, uh, coming from southwest Georgia, you very often hear that we're a forgotten part of the state. Nobody really cares about us. But I tell you, you have sent an unbelievable message. From the first time I heard about this, the excitement beginning to build. Actually, you know, I'm not coming back. I really thought about not coming back to this special session, but I said, I cannot afford not to be here because this is about southwest Georgia, and I appreciate you very, very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Albany is the pecan capital of the world. That's what we claim anyway. It's, uh, I'm sure everybody knows that. And our cotton farmers, uh, which are, obviously we have the cotton farmers, they're going to lose that crop for that one year. But we also know, I heard you say it, I heard in all the committees, that our pecans, y- you know, when you lose a pecan tree, you've lost income for a minimum of a fifteen-year period. And a lot of those saplings are not even going to be there to replace those thousands and thousands of trees. So the fact that the governor in this house has realized this is phenomenal, and I'm forever, ever appreciative. Now my question, we deleted two programs. I believe we deleted the Chattahoochee Technical College program at the thirty-five million, and then we deleted the, uh, the nine million for the, uh, the Mercer University, which I think was very, very good because then we would put this money back in. Now, we put fifty-five, we, we, up to fifty-five million in the Georgia Developmental Authority. So that was, that brought that twenty-five million up. The original was thirty. And my question is, the additional twenty million, I've, I've been to all these meetings, and it's so hard, and we're, it's happening so fast, but where, where did we put that additional twenty million, if you don't mind?
Raised the emergen, the governor's emergency fund from fifty million to sixty-nine million three hundred and twenty-two thousand fifty-five dollars. That was the difference.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you very much.
Yes, sir.
Representative Elam, we're glad you're here, and thank you for your service, by the way.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Watson, District One-Seventy-two, knows firsthand the effect of this devastation.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, does the gentleman yield?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to first say, thank you. I want to thank this body, um, as a farmer from southwest Georgia that puts his livelihood at stake every year in an environment that he cannot control. Um, thank you. I mentioned timing, uh, yesterday in committee, um, and the timing could not have been worse on this storm. Um, the timing of our harvest, the, the timing of paying bank notes, the timing of asking for help from the federal government could not be worse due to holidays and, and an election. But the timing of the governor calling this special session, and our speaker, and y'all all taking off to come here, uh, could not be perfect for the people of southwest Georgia. They've had no hope. We, we've given them hope, we've given them encouragement, and we've given them motivation because they have not seen that from anybody else. So from the bottom of my heart, thank all of you. Um, I just, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. That's why we're all here. Chair recognizes Representative Beverly from District One-Fifty-three for a question.
Does the gentleman yield?
Yes.
Um, I have just a quick technical question about the fifty-five million. And so once the loan goes out to undergird what just happened, uh, crop insurance is going to kick in, and then that money will come back. Will the General Assembly then claw that money back into the general fund, or will that money be left on the balance sheet of banks or?
That's, as I, no, not on, at the banks, but it would be at the Development Authority, Georgia Development Authority.
So, so that money will stay on the balance sheet of the Development Authority?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, it's a good question because there, there are two, two things that could happen. We could go in at some point and claw it back. However, um, that's fifty-five addition, fifty-five million additional capital that the Georgia Development Authority can use going forward to make production, or not, excuse me, not production loans, but capital loans, uh, as they have done with the current book of business that they have right now. Uh, they have about a sixty-five to seventy million dollar book of business. So it would, it would almost double what they have available for new and beginning farmers. They have a new and beginning farmer program called START, uh, and other agribusinesses that are looking to expand. So it does, once it's all said and done, there should be, and the intention is, that there would be more, uh, there on the books to be available for those kind of endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Mr. Chairman, if you'd yield for one more question, I think, uh, I'd like to ask one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, is it not true that I'm grateful to every member of this House who's taken their time to come back and ask questions and to make sure that this document that we're about to proceed with, we're putting to a vote, addresses the needs not only of agriculture in southwest Georgia, but the citizens of southwest Georgia, no matter what their walk of life, no matter what they do for a living, no matter what their station in life is, there's something in here that helps each and every one of them. Is that not true, Mr. Chairman?
The gentleman knows of which he speaks.
And, Mr. Chairman, is it not further true that I appreciate Governor Deal? The executive officers of his office and the statewide elected representatives have had a piece in making sure that we get the right application at the right place? And, and further, Mr. Chairman, is it not true that you and your staff have traveled into the affected areas to make sure that what you bring before this body is the right kind of information that looks into each and every heart and each and every need to make sure we address those as best we can within the means of this body and this state? Is that not true, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, that is my prayer. That is my hope, and that's why we're here. And I hope that we have done something or will do something through this that will truly make a positive difference in the lives of not only ten-point-five, ten-point-four million Georgians, but especially those that have been affected by this storm. And, and I would go further to say that it's my prayer that we never, ever see a storm like this again. We, we have no way to know. Um, the good Lord does things for mysterious reasons, and, and someday soon we'll find that out. But I pray that, that nothing like this ever hits our state again.
My prayers will, Mr. Chairman. That's all of the questions.
Okay.
Thank you, members. I think we've thoroughly, um, discussed the matter, Mr. Chairman. If you'd like to close with something, if not, we would, um, we have a couple of members who'd like to speak, would follow up, and, uh, that's time. That's all the questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, again, thank you to our body. Thank you to the governor and the speaker, the governor's staff, OPB, all the commissioners and directors and their employees, uh, whether it's a chainsaw crew with a forestry commission or somebody driving a dump truck with DOT, our ag food inspectors, uh, our GMA folks, all of those individuals, our DNR guys that have had chainsaw crews and been all over the state as well. Thank you to each of those individuals for taking time. I mean, it's a job, but at the same time, they left their families and have been away for their families, in some cases, six and seven days at a time, to go help others. They talk, take a solemn oath to protect and serve, and they have certainly done that. And my heart goes out to them, and my thanks goes out to them. And so I thank each and every one of you and ask that y'all would have favorable consideration for House Bill One EX, Committee Substitute. I yield the well.
Gentlemen, yield the well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your good work and your thorough explanation. At this time, the chair would recognize a gentleman from the One-Fifty-fourth who'd like to speak to the bill. Representative Dukes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank all of you. First of all, I want to begin by thanking the governor through his wisdom to come forth and address, to see that there was a need in our community and to convene a special session to address it. Many of you all know me from being, as being from Albany, but I also represent a very large part of rural Georgia. When the storm crossed, left Florida and came to Georgia, it was a Category Three hurricane. It hit the heart of my district. It came, the eye of the storm came through Seminole County, which I represent, Miller County, Baker County, and Dougherty County. It has been massive devastation. Now, it is also the heart of the agriculture, plant, row crop-producing areas of this state. We produce more pecans, more peanuts, massive amount of cotton than anyplace else in the world. It has literally devastated our agriculture community. So I want to thank y'all for coming. I want to thank you for this bill and for the governor showing that, that they do care about the people of our community. We are a very resilient people, and we are working tirelessly to put our community together. It is, it was like nothing that I have ever seen or experienced in my lifetime. So I want to also thank those of you who reached out to me and my family to make sure that our well-being was, was intact. So if anyone would feel as if this is not something that is desperately needed in our community, I, I'm here to appeal to you to let you know that this bill not only takes care of our agriculture community, but it also takes care of, of our people. Everybody in our community benefits from this legislation. So I'm going to appeal to each of you to vote in behalf of this measure so that we can put our communities back together. If there are no questions, Mr. Speaker, I will yield the well.
No questions. Thank you, Representative, for your comments. We have one last speaker, but we did have a question or a comment, but we don't now. Uh, at this time, the chair would, would, just one minute, um, Coach, um, the gentleman from the Eighty-seventh, did you have a question or a comment? Would take, would accept that now?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. It was more or less a comment, but I was just referencing to the governor's, um, position as to making this a special section. I grew up in Baker County, which Representative Dukes alluded to earlier, and I was raised around that area and also Dougherty County. I just wanted to say, when I heard that the governor's going to have a special session, it really made me feel good after my sixteen years here, that, uh, something has been done for the people of southwest Georgia without them asking, that he took it upon himself to call a special session so we can, uh, assemble and do something for the people of southwest Georgia. I applaud him for that, and I thank him for that because my Aunt Fanny, on that Wednesday night, had she been home and not up here, she would have died. The pine tree fell in her house. All three bedroom was damaged. So I just want to say again, thank you to this body and everybody that's in it. Thank you.
Representative Williams, thank you for your service, and, um, I'm glad that you were taking care of Aunt Fanny and you had her with you so when that pine tree came down. The, uh, it's a blessing. At this time, we have, um, would welcome up to the podium, uh, the lady from the One-hundred-and-seventy-third who knows, again, firsthand about the devastation that has occurred in her district and that part of the world, Chairman Darlene Taylor. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chairman, and all the members of the House. I represent the most southwest corner of the state of Georgia, and yes, we were devastated. Uh, across the rivers Alabama and, and south of me was Florida. And this district includes three counties that I represent, Thomas, Grady, and Decatur County. There was differing amounts of damage, but I will share with you that the area is devastated. Um, I want to thank the governor. It meant so much to us to have someone recognize the needs of our south Georgia area. We were one of the last to be coming out of the recession. Some of them, our areas are just getting and digging out from a loss. When this happened, I, I want everybody to know, this district was prepared. For the last three years, I've been attending meetings. Um, we had our DFAX, we had our health departments, we had everyone together preparing. If there was going to be something go wrong, we were going to be ready. And trust me, we were ready. But it was so overwhelming. It was not something that could be planned for and know everything that would be protected. When I saw how our emergency management operations functioned, it was absolutely amazing. We had our cities and our counties and our utilities and our medical centers working together. I left the operation center just hours before the storm hit, and I was able to go back within hours of it being over. It was so gratifying to see our GDOT trucks on the road, clearing the way so that the linemen could get in. Uh, I'll use Grady County for an example. There was no power whatsoever in any of the utilities. The EMC was out, the city was out, they lost their communication towers. They could not even communicate. This was a very difficult time. We were prepared, but you can never have enough preparation. I am so grateful to GMA and FEMA, our local officials, the first responders, our public works, the many linemen from all over the country that came to put us back together. We had our cities, our MEAGs, all of our state agencies stepped up and have delivered for our communities. I have to tell you, today, they're still doing it. Today, in Thomas County, our DFAX is helping to get the, uh, DSNAP benefits out to our folks. There were over a thousand people in line. I have one of my own employees that lost her house. She spent the first five days in a pop-up tent. We couldn't get to her. There were so many stories I could tell you, but the response that the state has been is unbelievable to me. Um, we talked about having to feed and take care of those workmen that came. We had no way to prepare for it. We needed a generator. I was able to go to GMA, and in less than twenty-four hours, it was something like fourteen hours, I had a generator so they could prepare food to feed the seven hundred that were just in this, my immediate area. We needed cots. We found four hundred cots. They were being able to be distributed to our centers, and all our centers were full of people that had nowheres to go. Some had no homes left at all. And I will tell you, there is many, many things that went right. Everybody was in- Everybody was in their place, even during this devastation. What are we looking at now? This is devastation, but we have only seen the beginning. This is going to be generational to be repaired. You don't think about it right now. Yes, the immediate thing was to fix the sticks and stones and get a place to eat and get a place to sleep, and you'll be all right. But what's coming next? There is no cotton to gin. There is no timber to mill. These are jobs that South Georgians had. This impact hasn't hit yet. The economic devastation is there, and it's still to come. I appreciate everything that we are doing as a body and that the governor recognized this, but it's not over. We want it to be over, but it's going to take us a while to get fully over it. We're not out. We may be down, but we are not out. This has lifted the spirits of South Georgia, knowing that our state government cares enough and recognizes us. For me, last week, as I was riding through the district and still canvassing, seeing what needed to be done, the highlight of the day for me was in Cairo, Georgia. They started putting up the Christmas lights. That brought so much happiness and lifted the spirits of our community. I just want to take this time to thank you, everyone that has worked on this and has given so much thought. We will be there, we'll be back, we'll be growing our peanuts and our cotton, and our trees will grow, and we appreciate all the help and thoughtfulness that y'all have given us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor. I want, hold that for one second. I would like for us to do something. As I've heard our members from southwest Georgia who so eloquently spoken to the devastation and the hope that this special session is giving to all Georgians, but especially them, I want to make a, give a special tribute to our members. Leader Trammell, all partisanship goes out, goes away when our citizens are in the position they've been over the last few months, and I can only say how grateful I am, as a Georgian, that we've come together, no matter which party, no matter how you see the world, to come back and help those that are so much in need in our state. But I'm especially thankful for our, the members, our colleagues in this body who have worked tirelessly for all Georgians that have been impacted. I'd like for us to all stand and look at our colleagues who are in those areas and give them a round of applause and thanks. The chair now recognizes Chairman England for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that House Bill 1 EX do pass by committee substitute.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second to the motion.
Chair recognizes the gentleman from 174th for the second to the motion. Thank you, Chairman, Chairman Jay Powell, has seconded the motion. Now, at this time, we'll call the question on House Bill 1 EX. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
Didn't take much to figure that out. The ayes have it, and House Bill 1 EX passes by committee substitute. The chair recognizes the gentleman from the 116th, Chairman England.
Mr. Chair, as chairman of the committee of the whole House, you are instructed to report the action of the committee of the whole House to the House.
Chair recognizes the majority leader of the House, Leader Burns.
Mr. Speaker, the committee of the whole House has had under consideration House Bill 1 EX and has instructed me, as its chairman, to report the same back to the House with the recommendation that House Bill 1X do pass by committee substitute.
The report of the chairman of the committee of the whole House is received. The committee of the whole House has had under consideration House Bill 1 EX and has reported the same back to the House with the recommendation that House Bill 1 EX do pass by committee substitute. The committee of the whole House is hereby dissolved. We're about to vote, but I think that I would be remiss if I did not, I can't add to that which has already been said, but I want to give a special addition to the comments that have been made about our governor. Great, great leadership in calling this special session to deal with devastation the likes of which I have never seen in my lifetime. And so I know that we all appreciate his leadership, his compassion, and Chairman Taylor said it best, that we're not going to recover from this in a short period of time, but having been down there and seeing the spirit of determination of our fellow Georgians, we will be back. This whole state will be back. The clerk will read the caption to House Bill 1 EX.
House Bill 1 EX by Representative Rawson, the 7th, Jones, the 47th, Burns, the 159th, and others, entitled an act to amend the act making and providing appropriations to state fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, known as the General Appropriations Act.
Is there any objection to the previous question being ordered on House Bill 1 EX? The chair hears none. The previous question is ordered. Is there any objection to adopting the committee substitute? Chair hears none. The committee substitute is adopted. Is there any objection to agreeing to the report of the committee, which was favorable to the passage of the bill? The chair hears none. The report of the committee is agreed to. Shall this bill now pass? All those in favor of the passage of House Bill 1 EX will vote aye. Those opposed will vote no, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members now voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines. On the passage of House Bill 1 EX, the ayes are 162. The nays are 1. This bill, having received the requisite constitutional majority, is therefore passed.
Mr. Speaker, I move immediate transmittal of House Bill 1 EX committee sub to the Senate.
Chairman England has moved that House Bill 1 EX be immediately transmitted to the state senate. Is there objection? The chair hears none, and it is on its way over there. What purpose does Chairman Powell rise?
Motion.
State your motion.
I move that House Bill 4 EX be recommitted to rules.
Chairman Powell has moved that House Bill 4 EX be recommitted to the Rules Committee. Is there objection? Chair hears none, and it is so ordered. The clerk, well, first of all, clerk, Mr. Clerk, would you read the caption to House Bill 4 EX?
House Bill 4 EX by Representative Powell and others, to be entitled an act to amend Article 2 of Chapter 7, Title 48 of Fiscal Georgia Annointed Relating the Imposition Rate Computation Exemptions from Income Taxes.
Now that the caption has been read, is there objection to the motion to recommit the bill to the Rules Committee? Chair hears none, and it is back in rules. Chair recognizes the vice chairman of the Rules Committee, Vice Chairman Harrell, for an announcement.
To no surprise, the Rules Committee will meet this afternoon at 1:30.
Vice Chairman Harrell announces that the Rules Committee will meet at 1:30 this afternoon. Chair recognizes Representative Silcox to introduce the doctor of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am delighted to welcome and honored to introduce Dr. Randy Reiser. Dr. Reiser is president of the Physician Spine and Rehabilitation Specialist of Georgia and practices in Sandy Springs. He graduated Phi Beta Kappa from Bates College and received his doctor of medicine degree from the Medical College of Ohio in 1976. He completed his residency in anesthesiology at Dartmouth Hitchcock Medical Center. Dr. Reiser is board certified in anesthesiology with the added qualification in pain management given by the American Board of Anesthesiology. He's been named one of Atlanta's top doctors by Atlanta Magazine and one of the top doctors in the country by U.S. News and World Report. He is a member of the Chairman's Advisory Council of the Georgia State Board of Workers' Compensation. He also serves on the Board of Directors in the Medical Association of Atlanta and the Medical Association of Georgia. In response to the events of September 11th, Dr. Reiser volunteered to join the U.S. Army Reserve Medical Corps. He currently holds the rank of Colonel and has served on active duty in Kosovo in 2004 and in Iraq in 2007 through 2008, as well as 2011. If you would please, welcome Dr. Randy Reiser.
Thank you, Representative Silcox, Mr. Speaker. It's a privilege and a pleasure to serve you today as doctor of the day. Speaking as a veteran, on this week of Veterans Day, I want to thank you for all you do for the welfare of veterans in the state of Georgia. And as a physician, I want to thank you for putting patients first in caring for Georgians and for maintaining the importance of the doctor-patient relationship. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Minority Caucus, Chairman Beverly, for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The House Democratic Caucus will meet in room 216 as soon as we get out of here for lunch, and we're going to be talking about federally qualified opportunity zones. Lunch will be served. If you don't like it, talk to Representative Mike Clanton. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yield the well.
What y'all having to eat?
Are you supposed to read it for them and then walk in?
I was there a couple days after that happened.
And this is your Board of Education?
Still.
Yeah. Long time.
Yeah.
They can't do it to me like.
Maybe it's somewhere.
So why would they try to slip it in? Why would they try to slip it in between the legs? This is history. Obviously they do it because they should put this on.
A little hot, can you fix that?
We're not. I don't feel a difference.
Like, I felt it eased up a little when you pushed it over there. I didn't feel like the hot breeze blowing on me constantly anymore, but.
I'm always like, really, but.
House will come back to order. Mr. Clerk, you want to ring the bell?
Honoring the life and memory of Lawrence Terrence Etheridge. Commending hearts to nourish hope incorporated. Honoring life and memory of Vern Trenner Trenna Marie Corrin. Honoring Deena Huff for his service with the Partnership for Families Children and Youth in Walton County, Georgia. Honoring the life and memory of Dr. Martin Moran. Honoring the life and memory of William Billy R. Bridges Jr. And for other purposes, that completes the reading of the privileged resolutions.
Is there any objection to adopting the privileged resolutions? The chair hears none and the resolutions are adopted. We are waiting on the arrival of a Rules Committee amendment to House HB 4EX. I understand it will be here momentarily and then we will take the last two measures up.
This House will come back to order. House will come back to order. Mr. Clerk, you want to ring the bell? The clerk will read the caption to a group of privileged resolutions. The clerk will read.
Honoring the life and memory of Lawrence Terrence Etheridge. Commending Hearts to Nourish Hope Incorporated. Honoring life and memory of Vern Trenner Trenna Marie Corrin. Honoring Deana Huff for her service with the Partnership for Families Children and Youth in Walton County, Georgia. Honoring the life and memory of Dr. Martin Moran. Honoring the life and memory of William Billy R. Bridges Jr. And for other purposes, that completes the reading of the privileged resolutions.
Is there any objection to adopting the privileged resolutions? The Chair here has known and the resolutions are adopted. We are waiting on the arrival of a Rules Committee amendment to House HB 4EX. I understand it will be here momentarily and then we will take the last two measures up. Clerk will read the caption to a privileged resolution.
Honoring the life and memory of Deacon Floyd William Bailey and for other purposes.
Is there objection to the adoption of the resolution? The Chair here has known and the resolution is adopted. All right, the Clerk's office advises that the Rules Committee substitute to HB 4EX is on the desk. So we're going to go back to the Rules Calendar. Chair recognizes. Clerk will read the caption to House Bill 4EX.
House Bill 4EX by Representative Rhodes, the 120th, Paula 171st, Rogers of the 10th, and others to be entitled an act to amend Article 2, Chapter 7, Title 48 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated relating the imposition rate computation and exemptions from income taxes.
Chair recognizes Representative Rhodes to present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, good afternoon. I bring before you House Bill 4EX. And friends, this is why we're here. Our friends, our family, our neighbors in South Georgia, they need us. And this is the type of things that we can do for them to help them, to give them a kickstart and try to get them back on their right feet. We lost 2.4 million acres. This is over a million loads of wood that's laying on the ground. I want to say it's 1.3. But that's a lot of log trucks going up and down the road. That's the type of wood that we have laying on the ground down in South Georgia. And we have pecan orchards who have served families for generations laying on the ground. And we're here to help them. This bill is a $200 million timber tax credit that can be used over 10 years. It's aimed at offsetting income taxes and is tied to reforestation of those devastated areas. The tax credit will be based on timber losses from October the 9th to December the 31st to 2018. The area is defined as a 28 county region in Southwest Georgia. Director Williams and the Georgia Forestry Commission designated this area. I want to make sure that we take note of this and mention that pecan trees are included in the definition of timber, so this does include our pecan orchards. Replanting has to be done in the county in which the devastation occurred. So we want to make sure that we're having reforestation in these areas that were devastated the most. The bill is also, enables us to pro-rate approvals. We wanted to make sure we didn't run out of money and wanted to make sure that everybody that needed this money had a chance to get it. And if there's money still available, in the end, we can come back and reopen this if need be. The change that we had to make a few seconds ago in Rules Committee, if you look online, 102, 102 through 130. What this does is this gives the recipient of the grant an option. They can have it refundable and get 100% of their money. Or they can, it's transferable. They can sell it and get their money a little quicker. We wanted them to have an either or option on this. So, Mr. Speaker, that's the legislation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do you yield for a question?
Yes, sir.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Minority Caucus, Representative Beverly, to your left for a question.
Gentlemen, yield.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. So it's, if the tax credit is transferred, does a person, is a person under the obligation to then have to replant? Does a person have to replant if the tax is transferred?
Yes, sir. You have to have 90% to receive the credit. You have to have 90% reforestation to get the grant.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Do you further yield?
Yes, sir, I'll take one more.
Chair recognizes Representative Perkel to your right for a question.
Will the gentleman yield for a question?
I will to my friend.
Is it not true that this particular legislation will provide a tremendous benefit to our forest landowners?
Absolutely.
Is it not further true that changes that just made will provide additional flexibility to allow our landowners, our farmers of trees, to get the money a little sooner?
Absolutely.
Thank you for this.
Yes, sir, thank you. I ask for your favorable consideration, Mr. Speaker. I yield a well.
Gentlemen has yielded the well. Is there any objection to the previous question being ordered on House Bill 4EX? The Chair here has known the previous question is ordered. Is there any objection to withdrawing the committee substitute? The Chair here has known the committee substitute is withdrawn. Is there any objection to adopting the substitute offered by the Committee on Rules? The Chair here has known the Rules Committee substitute is adopted. Is there any objection to agreeing to the report of the committee, which was favorable to the passage of the bill? The Chair here has known the report of the committee is agreed to. Shall this bill now pass? All those in favor of the passage of House Bill 4EX will vote aye. Those opposed will vote no and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? If so, the clerk... I wouldn't just wait on anybody. Have all members now voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines on the passage of House Bill 4EX. The ayes are 157, the nays are 2. This bill, having received the requisite constitutional majority, is therefore passed. For what purpose does Representative Rhodes rise?
To make a motion.
State your motion.
I make a motion, we immediately send the bill across the halls to the Senate, House Bill 4EX.
Is that the same thing as an immediate transmittal?
That's it, yes, sir. You said it better than me.
That's what you say in Greensboro, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
On the gentleman's motion that House Bill 4EX be immediately transmitted to the Senate, is there objection? Is there objection? The Chair here has known and it is so ordered. Clerk will read the caption to House Bill 5EX.
House Bill 5EX by Representative Rhodes, the 120th, Paula 171st, and others to be entitled an act to amend Article, Chapter 8 of Title 48 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated relating the sales and use taxes, so as to ratify an executive order of the Governor.
The Chair recognizes Representative Rhodes to present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, hello again. House Bill 5EX. House Bill 5EX coincides with Georgia being the number one state in the nation to do business. This bill is not about a company. The question at hand is whether eliminating the jet fuel tax is a good thing for Georgia. And absolutely, I feel that it is. We are at a competitive disadvantage. States like Texas and North Carolina do not have a tax on their jet fuel. Georgia ranks, Georgia is the fourth highest jet fuel tax state out of the 21 that have major airport hubs. I'll give you an example. When we eliminated the energy tax for manufacturing, our manufacturing jobs went up by 13%. We feel this will have the same ripple effect in the airline industry. I'm asking everyone to also take note that this exemption will benefit all commercial airlines and will benefit all nine commercial airports in the state of Georgia. And we anticipate that this will have multiple job opportunities and creations in the state of Georgia. Also, one change that we made in this bill now is on ratification. If ratification is to take place, it will take a state, a declared state of emergency and 2/3 vote of the legislature. So, Mr. Speaker, I'll be glad to try to answer a few questions.
Chair recognizes Representative Rogers to your right for a question.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the gentleman yield?
Yes, sir.
Is it not true that Georgia has been named the number one state in the nation for business for the last six years and that we've created 750,000 new jobs? We see unemployment drop tremendously and in great measure is because of the work between the Governor, the legislature, and the Georgia Department of Economic Development and taking a very proactive approach to business?
The gentleman knows what he speaks.
And is it not true that this bill right here is a proactive approach to economic development? It will allow us to compete and to make certain that jobs are created for everyone in Georgia and that the jet fuel will apply to all jets, not just certain carriers?
Absolutely, you're correct.
Great, thank you, sir, I appreciate the bill.
Thank you. I'll take one more, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes the Minority Leader of the House, Leader Trammell, to your left for a question.
Will the gentleman yield?
Yes, sir.
Isn't it true this bill has a sunset provision so that this exemption repeal will sunset June 30th, 2019?
You're absolutely correct, sir.
Do you have other questions?
Mr. Speaker, it's getting late in the day, I'm going to yield a well.
Gentlemen has yielded a well. What purpose does Chairman Martin rise?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Mr. Speaker, isn't it true that the gentleman mentioned that it applied to commercial airlines, but isn't it also true, Mr. Speaker, it applies to anyone that purchases jet fuel, individuals or otherwise in the state?
That's the understanding of the Chair.
Thank you.
What purpose does Representative Wilkerson rise?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Isn't it true that we came to the special session to help out rural Georgia that was devastated by hurricane and there may be some concern that the revenue projection that we increased by 270 million matches what was in HB 918? And there may be some concern with giving a tax break to a corporation when people may pay more taxes next month?
Well, I appreciate the gentleman's inquiry. I think under the law, we had to take up this measure because it was in the form of an executive order. So that's why we're here considering and debating this during this special session. What purpose does Chairman England rise?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Is it not true that Governor Deal in making the revenue estimate earlier this year had contemplated that there would be a jet fuel tax deduction? And so that has already been accounted for in the revenue estimates?
I would think that to be the case. What purpose does Representative Jones rise?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Again, isn't, it is not, is it true that this bill applies to all jet fuel sales in the state of Georgia? But is it not further true that Delta is currently tankering millions of gallons of jet fuel from out of state to the Atlanta Hartsfield Elfort? And that we are therefore not currently gaining the tax revenue? Nor are our local fuel jobbers receiving the benefit of the sales of that jet fuel from Atlanta Hartsfield? Is that not true, Mr. Speaker?
I have no knowledge of where they get their fuel. I just want to make sure that the tanks are full when I leave. What purpose? What purpose does Representative Gilligan rise?
Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
Is it not true that if we do not vote for this particular measure and ratify this, that we would in fact be doing a retroactive tax increase on all jet fuels?
I'm not sure that it's a tax increase, but it would be a tax collected.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have a member or two that wish to be heard on the bill, and the chair recognizes to speak to the bill Representative Turner.
I appreciate you all. Every time I come up here, I get lots of nods from right here. I know that this has been described as the Delta jet fuel tax exemption, and that is a complete and totally inaccurate description. As someone who wants to see a fair and level playing field in the marketplace for everybody that participates in a certain market, I wanted to come and address that point specifically and a couple of others. I have tried over the years, from this very spot, to convince you that whenever we put special conditions around a tax exemption, that we are tilting the playing field, that we are creating an environment where we are actually picking winners and losers. Just this past regular session, I stood here and tried to convince you of that on a specific bill. I didn't convince everyone of that, but that is what happens whenever we put a specific set of conditions on a tax exemption. This doesn't have any type of exemptions. So, what we are doing by passing HB 5EX is we're creating a level playing field in the marketplace for all carriers. Not... so it's not the Delta jet fuel exemption, it is the airline in Georgia jet fuel exemption. Virgin Atlantic, Southwest Airlines, they're all American Airlines United, doesn't matter who you fly. The other part about this, when we start talking about taxes, is this is a tax that the corporations are currently collecting, but they're passing on to their consumers. We call that an embedded tax. So, you are actually, as... whenever you purchase a ticket or fare to fly to wherever you're going when you leave Georgia, you are actually paying that, not Delta, not United, not Virgin Atlantic. They're collecting it on the state's behalf, but you're the one that's actually paying it. And so, by voting for this, we're actually lowering the tax burden on the general flying public. That is actually what we're doing with this piece of legislation. And I would be remiss if I didn't express the following sentiments, which is that this is a correction of an error. Let this be a symbolic measure that we are closing the door on a dark chapter in Georgia's history, and as a legislature, we are not going to punish an entire industry because we disagree with one person or one player's political point or viewpoint. This is what this is for me. It's an economic issue, it's a lowering tax issue, and it's closing the chapter on a book that needs to be closed. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Gentleman chooses not to yield. You had questions, I mean, you don't... Against my better judgment, Chair, what purpose does Representative Pizzo rise?
Thank you. Parliamentary inquiry.
State your inquiry.
So, contrary to my good friend's previous statement, this does in some shape and form create an uneven playing field, because is it not true that there are pilots in this state that charter aircraft that uses regular low-grade avgas and not jet fuel, so they would not be able to take advantage of this exemption?
I don't know, I'm gonna ask you to go talk to Representative Belton about that. He might be able to shed some light on that. Or at least pour fuel on the fire. All right, the chairman of the committee has the last word, and he waves. Is there any objection to the previous question being ordered? The chair hears none, previous question is ordered. What purpose does Representative Belton rise?
Sir, pursuant to the Chairman Chokus decree, House Rule 133 would like to be recused from this vote.
Gentleman has that right, and the journal will so reflect, we'll have to dust that rule off come January. Is there any objection to the previous question being ordered? The chair here is none, the previous question is ordered. Is there any objection to withdrawing the committee substitute? The chair here is none, the committee substitute is withdrawn. Is there any objection to adopting the substitute offered by the Committee on Rules? The chair here is none, the Rules Committee substitute is adopted. Is there any objection to agreeing to the report of the committee which was favorable to the passage of the bill? The chair here is none, the report of the committee is agreed to. Shall this bill now pass? All those in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye. Those opposed will vote no, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines on the passage of House Bill 5EX. The ayes are one hundred and forty-one, the nays are eighteen. This bill having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore passed. What purpose does Representative Rhodes rise?
Make a motion, sir.
State your motion.
I make a motion that House Bill 5EX be immediately transmitted to the Senate.
The gentleman has moved that House Bill 5EX be immediately transmitted to the Senate. Is there any objection to the motion? Any objection? The chair hears none, and it is on its way to the other chamber. Okay, that completes the Rules Calendar, we're moving on now to morning orders. Morning orders. We have a number of people who have signed up for morning orders today. The Rules of the House allow for a total of twenty minutes to be dedicated cumulatively to the morning orders. So, the chair is going to allocate two minutes each to those who have signed up, and the chair recognizes Representative Stovall for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and members of the House. I come before you today because there are major issues within our state agencies. The bureaucracies are unregulated when we aren't in legislative session. Decisions are made... being made not in the best interest of Georgians. One in particular is the prevention and community support department under DFACS. Although federally funded partially, the director of that department canceled a contract for convenience for a provider servicing in the South Fulton and Clayton County area. Have you ever heard of a council for convenience for a state contract using taxpayers' money? This provider had been providing services for at least six years with no documented violations. As a matter of fact, the provider's awarded amount increased each year because of being responsible. I met with the interim director of DFACS on my concerns, and then met with the staff. When I questioned the staff, why wasn't it... why was it canceled? We were told because the provider caused extra work for the staff in that department. The department had just made changes to a policy, but then properly trained the staff. So, of course, there were gonna be questions. The real reason behind the malicious cancellation is because the same department was delaying the processing of payment to those providers, and one of which reached out to my office to gain assistance. This was retaliation. Prior to the cancellation, I asked, did they meet with the provider? The answer was no. I asked, did you contact the high school which was receiving the services, which is an at-risk, all-time high school for sixteen to twenty-one years?
Lady's time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and the answer was no.
Good move. Chair recognizes Representative F. Stration for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On behalf of the Gwinnett County delegation, the House considered and passed House Resolution 5EX honoring the life and memory of Officer Antoine Tony of the Gwinnett County Police On October 20th, 2018, Officer Antoine Tony, a member of the Gwinnett County Police Department who served with honor and distinction, lost his life while investigating a suspicious vehicle in protecting the residents of Gwinnett County. It is fitting and proper that the people's body, this House, approved House Resolution 5EX honoring the dedication and commitment of Officer Tony, an exceptional citizen of this state. I ask, Mr. Speaker, with your permission, that the members of this body please have a moment of silence in memory of Officer Tony and in prayer for his family. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Representative Kendrick. She waves. Chair recognizes the minority leader of the House, Leader Trammell, for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, sometimes it's the duty of the opposition party to stand and be the conscience of this body.
Just a minute, Mr. Leader. Did anybody hear an adjournment motion? These morning orders are important to the members giving them, and I suspect they're not doing it just to hear themselves talk. So, if you're going to be in the chamber, please give attention and respect to the member in the well. Gentleman may proceed, and I will not count that against your time.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And we rise today on one of those occasions as the conscience of this body to talk about events that happened in our Capitol, the place where we work and represent the people of Georgia. On Tuesday, Georgians from all over this state came to exercise their liberty interests that are guaranteed by the United States Constitution to peaceably assemble, to petition their government on an issue fundamental bedrock to democracy, the right to vote, the right that every vote be counted. And what happened on Tuesday, we cannot sit on our hands and duck and avoid. Fifteen members, friends, colleagues, were arrested here in this Capitol. They were charged with something disruption of the General Assembly. That's us. That's us. A rule that was designed to protect the order of our business. These citizens gathered to come and do the highest form of democracy, to come and petition their government, and yet they were arrested in our Capitol. And did it disturb the order of our business? No. They were arrested and taken into custody shortly before we convened at 1:30. But what it purported... the charge purported to disrupt was our proceeding on Tuesday. So, I want to issue this call because we have a duty as duly-elected leaders from all over Georgia to right wrongs where we can, and before we leave here, we have unfinished business, and that is to call for charges to be dropped. Our colleague from across the way, Senator Nikima Williams, she was arrested despite privilege under our Constitution against arrest. We stand with Senator Williams, we stand with these Georgians. The charges need to be dropped.
Chair recognizes Chairman Reinders for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I will be brief. On October 10th, we had the tragedy, we all know about it, the hurricane, and I was up here, and my wife was in our home, and the tree fell on our home, and she's fine. But I just want you to know, you separate the togetherness and the unity that we have as human beings sometimes because the politics get in the way and all this, but I just want to tell you how much I appreciate each and every one of you that reached out to me and my family, and just wanted to say thank you so much. I couldn't send all the cards on both sides of the aisle that took the time to just say I hope everything's okay, and it just means a lot to me, and it means a lot to my wife as well. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I yield a well.
Chair recognizes Representative Cannon for an afternoon order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, two days ago, my senator was arrested. I was appalled to see as her belongings, and she was taken to the soundproof vans awaiting her, that the police... the Capitol Police told me to be at ease and to be on hold. But you see, I'm studying for the LSAT right now, and you have to examine logic. It is illogical that when votes are on hold, that you can be at ease. And I want to make it clear, the fourteen Georgians who were arrested were mothers with small children, grandmothers who stand for peace, Latinas who were in need of medicine, a veteran who was honored the day before, a transgender Georgian who was thrown to the ground, a journalist who covers our General Assembly, and a chief of staff here at this Capitol for the past twelve years. The code cited on their arrests talks about preventing or disrupting the General Assembly. I want to ask each and every one of you, were any of you prevented or disrupted on Tuesday? I believe most of your answers would be no, because many of you didn't even know it was happening, as I was one of the only members who was there with some of the people standing here as well. I would like to request, along with these members, that those charges be dropped, not just because of grandstanding, but because due process was averted. When I stood there with Senator Williams, the Miranda rights were never read to her or any other members. We want this state Capitol to be a place that welcomes all and upholds the right to assemble. Please find it in your duty of service to continue to speak with the Georgians who have been affected, and to speak with the officials that can make sure that the charges are dropped. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Representative Bodie for an afternoon order. Chair recognizes Representative Scott for a morning order. Chair recognizes Representative Dreyer for a... Chair recognizes Representative Drier for an afternoon order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I was alerted to the situation in the rotunda on Tuesday and I went down as well. I went down a few moments after Senator Williams, who is my friend. I, I stepped away and I came back in, um, and I was treated differently than Senator Williams. And I'm not accusing any individual person of anything, but I, but I wanna say something I think's really important and it's really on my heart. If you were to ask most members of this General Assembly that are minorities if there is prejudice in the criminal justice system and there is a different treatment of minorities by police officers, I think you're gonna get a clear answer. And in my conversations with most members of the majority in the General Assembly, I think you're gonna get a different answer. And I think there's a very big gap in understanding of how prejudice ha- plays a role in the criminal justice system from the very top to the very bottom and to this House also. And I would urge us to honestly, without deflecting or pointing a finger or bringing up something that someone else has done, to take a look at that and have conversations with our colleagues and our fellow members here. And when they tell us something that's difficult to hear, that we listen and we don't push back and we accept that they have more life experiences in this area and we can grow and learn from them. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Representative Perkel for a morning order. Chair recognizes Representative Wilkerson for a morning order. He waves. Chair recognizes Representative Shannon for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. When police rushed in, they were just shoving people aside and I ended up on the floor. I spent several hours at Grady getting checked out. The Capitol Police and State House Patrol accused me of throwing myself onto the floor. I was taken to a side office and they made everyone leave except for one friend. Then they guarded the door. When I asked to speak to the head of Capitol Police, five men came in, in this, into the small room, stood over me and said that they watched the video and that I was lying. I was almost hysterical at that point. They started showing me their handcuffs and told me I better calm down. Their intent was obvious. This is an account from a seventy-year-old grandmother who was visiting the state Capitol on Tuesday. She was here Tuesday exercising her First Amendment rights and voicing her opinions about the direction of things going on in Georgia in reference to the recent elections. I wanna remind everybody that this is the People's House. I had constituents down there on Tuesday and I have to say, um, I also went down to stand with my constituents and I wouldn't even call what those folks were doing a protest. In fact, I protested in this Capitol before being elected and what I saw was so much of nothing that I turned around and came back upstairs and got ready to, uh, move forward with session because I couldn't even tell if the thing had already happened or if it had not started yet. So again, I wanna remind you that people do have the right to come down here and voice their opinion about how things are going. The treatment of the voters, taxpayers, and seniors especially on Tuesday is indefensible. There is no reason that police should have been directed to descend on Georgians exercising their First Amendment rights in the way that they did. I mean, are we really saying that we need to be protected from voters? That's a joke. It really is. So let's get serious. The job of public service comes with critique. You can either listen to the public when they visit you or you can hear their thoughts at the ballot box. And for some of you, you've already heard their final message to you in this past election. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Representative Bentley for an afternoon order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, colleagues. I just wanted to stand before you this afternoon to tell you that on May third of this year, my entire life changed. My husband was involved in a really bad car accident and was suffering a spinal cord injury and now is paralyzed from that accident. We have been at the Shepherd Center all summer. He had the car accident May third, surgery at Navarson Health in Macon on May seventh, and moved into the Shepherd Center on May fourteenth and was there all summer. We came out August, end of August. And on the first of, part of September, the doctors told us that he's, has to have surgery all over again, go, have to go back through that eight, nine-hour surgery all over again. And before we can get to that surgery, he ended up with an infection and was hospitalized once again and he's in the hospital right now. And so we're gonna be in the hospital throughout Thanksgiving. So as you with your family and friends doing Thanksgiving, please think of the Bentley family and keep us in prayer. And I thank all of you for your prayers, your support, your financial donations, for coming to visit with us and sit with us at the Shepherd Center. It has truly been a rough summer, a really rough year for the Bentley family. But I, in the words of the late Whitney Houston, "I didn't know my own strength and I know God didn't bring me this far to leave me." And with this body of family and friends surrounding me, you just don't know how much I appreciate your love and your support and your strength and energy is bouncing off of you onto me. So I'm gonna make it through this and I just pray that the Lord will heal my husband's body so that he can walk again. We had our last dance on May second of this year, an accident was May third. So I pray that the Lord will bless him, that he can, we can have that dance again on May second of two thousand and nineteen. And I thank you all. Thank you so much for your support and may God bless you all. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Representative Kelly for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Members of the House, we started off our afternoon orders honoring the life of one of our police officers who put himself in harm's way and sacrificed his life for his community and this state. We are gathered here in a special session to deal with the devastation and the hopelessness that has existed in South Georgia. I am disappointed that all the good that we have done today has now been interrupted by accusations against our brave men and women that serve to protect us and keep us safe around this Capitol. These men and women put their lives on the line for us every day. We are still a state and a nation of laws. Here's where we need to debate whether those laws are changed or not. When we look at our Code section that governs the ability for us to debate and protest in this Capitol, we need to have that debate in this chamber and we'll have that opportunity in January. But when I listen to a member of the minority party ask for due process, I ask for that same due process to be applied to the brave men and women that put their lives on the line to keep us safe. We have not seen an investigation to understand the full extent of what laws may have been broken. And I ask them to extend the same courtesy of due process that they're asking for for the accused, for those brave men and women who have to make quick decisions to keep us safe in this Capitol. I think if you look at the administration that has governed this state for the last eight years, you have seen no party and no administration that has done more for criminal justice reform in our state and it's a shame, a shame that that gets forgotten. Mr. Speaker, I yield the well.
Okay, we're going on now to announcements. Chair recognizes for an announcement Representative Bennett. She waves. Chair recognizes for an announcement, uh, represent, Chairman Tom Taylor and Chairman Ron Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, the folks who have signed up for the Tyler Perry tour from Economic Development and Ways and Means, uh, we will meet at the bus across from the Garcheck immediately upon adjournment to go there. Again, this is people who, who already signed up for this, uh, but we'll meet immediately after adjournment. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Chairman Knight for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Due to the, uh, extended time of session today, the, um, uh, Study Committee on the ER Retroactive Billing Hearing will begin immediately upon adjournment in C, uh, CLOB 606. We've had some folks to come to testify, they waited very patiently, uh, for us, so that, that meeting will begin immediately upon adjournment, CLOB 606.
Okay, we, that completes our announcements. We have, um, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes the Dean of the House.
Mr. Speaker, uh, today they're having the elections for the, um, ATL, uh, election on the House Bill nine thirty-one is at, uh, three o'clock in Room, uh, four oh six for District Seven and the other one is Room four oh six, I mean, five oh six for District Eight and they're, uh, starting at three o'clock and they wanted me to make that announcement because of the fact we run a little longer, they were waiting on the legislators. Thank you very much.
We've had a lot of questions about our schedule from this point on. We will be in session tomorrow. The Majority Leader will make a motion here shortly. Obviously, we have now done our work and have sent it over to the Senate. Uh, I understand their committees will be meeting tomorrow. Um, but also rumor going around, they may be here Saturday. We will not be here Saturday. I'm gonna be in Calhoun, Georgia, Saturday. And I suspect that many of you will probably wanna be there too. So if, uh, depending on our need to be back, we'll come back in on Monday. Uh, but we will be here tomorrow and the Chair recognizes the Majority Leader for a motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move this House stand adjourned until ten AM Friday, November the sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
The Majority Leader has moved that this House be adjourned until ten o'clock AM on Friday, November sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, this House will be adjourned until ten o'clock AM on Friday.